Half a million dollars over four years.
So as far as what I was looking at for, for the information.
I mean, and the reason I, I ask is are we better off doing some other kind of financial arrangement?
I, I have just gone with what.
The first payment of sale.
Financing and what, if there's a better way, then very open to, to that. And the, the bottom numbers are they, they expect things to go up, but they haven't yet. So that was what they gave me for, for numbers for, you know, if it did go up, that's what it would be.
Yeah, I don't know how it cuts nineteen grand because you're only changing the rate by five one-hundredths of a point. Anyway, we'll look at it.
Look, that, as far as the, the figures, what I could figure out, you know, your, if you don't pay the first payment, it would be one twenty-six sixty-eight. If you did pay the first payment, it's one twenty-two.
Right, but that's, that's a divisible number. I mean, you're taking the gross amount that you're buying and dividing it by a number of years. And if you're paying a year in advance, then you're actually paying an extra year. You're dividing the payments by more years or more time. The rate doesn't change substantially.
No. So that's.
And, and my only reason for bringing this up is not to say that we don't need a new fire truck. It's to say, we're trying to, I wanted to flatten that curve on the.
And what.
Well, the same reason I mentioned the lease purchase.
Right.
Right. I guess I will offer this with respect to the bumps in the CIP chart, having worked with it for a number of years. And that is that as we sort of get there, those things sort of, they, they do get massaged out. And if we push something out now because it looks like next year, there's going to be more capital capacity. Next year, there's, you know, there's a thirty thousand dollar septic, for instance, or something else that, that jumps up. The CIP process is, I think, does a pretty good job of, of including predictable repetitive type things. You know, we know we're going to need to replace fire apparatus periodically. We, we know we have vehicles that have to be replaced. Some of the items like replacement or rebuilding of the refuse compactors at the transfer station. Get a heads up several years in advance and we can kind of look toward it. But there are, there are things that come up along the way that, that haven't been previously identified that fall into the, into the capital expenditure area.
What worries me is that, you know, the newer stuff that we have, you know, the suburban, suburban engine going at sixty-eight thousand miles on its two thousand and ten, the stuff just doesn't seem to be lasting for long, does it?
Yeah.
I don't know why you're not buying Ford's, but that's.
Oh, the last two, but we'll have Ford's.
I had a Ford once.
But as, as far as, you know, as far as replacement, yeah, as we go along, you know, it could cost us quite a bit more money as far as to, for upkeep with the truck. It's staying fairly, fairly reasonable as far as.
And one question that came up was value of the truck that we're getting rid of.
Well, that's the question. Who's going to buy the truck knowing that it has a frame issue?
It has still, you have all.
It must, it must, well, the, most of the equipment that's on it is going on to, the loose equipment's going on the new truck.
But the body with the tank, you're not taking it off.
Right, yeah, I don't know. There, there may be a place that can sell it or whatever. We definitely need to look at that.
In the past, we've disposed of old apparatus.
Right.
You sell it for whatever it's worth.
Yeah.
But it sounds to me like the biggest area of concern with this one is the frame deterioration. Of course, if it was, if it was from Toyota, they, they're replacing.
Yeah, I mean, the, the new apparatus is come, they're coming with a twenty-year warranty, obviously, as far as frame wise. So there's, there's the life of the truck, basically. And people are getting, hopefully getting longer than that in, in those cases.
Actually sitting around so we're sitting.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it is. I mean, the truck just goes, it goes from sitting there for whatever period of time, going out, getting run really hard and, you know, for a long period of time, and then put back.
Yeah.
And as much as make, you know, we try to keep up with the maintenance, obviously, for everything with that, but you can't foresee, foresee everything. But as far as, if you think that it's going to be, what, why worry is that it doesn't get put on the warrant article for people to make a decision one way or another. The library and everything, if it doesn't go through, then are we going to be fighting for space next year?
Well, I mean, we've beat the dead wars for a while, so.
I'm, I'm going to move that article.
One second.
So for five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And as I remember from in the past, as we get closer to putting the whole thing together, you may have some better pricing, but then we can adjust that. It's important we have it as accurate as possible.
I had one thing under discussion. I'd like to see the wording massaged a little bit, but I want your opinion.
Did you hear the, the wording?
Massaged a little bit to where it reads to purchase and equip.
Yeah. It has to.
For example, you may be able to, the company can say, I'll put the brackets on for your air packs. It saves you having to budget that someplace else.
Yeah, all of the, the past articles are, are to purchase and equip.
And, and again, the list that we're working from is a list that was recommended by CIP. This is not, this, this is not suggested wording for the articles. And as we put the warrant together, it will be done with the consultation and blessing DRA to make sure we don't get in, in trouble legally on that. So, but a good point on that, purchase and equip.
Are you massaging your motion?
I'll read the motion. Article to raise and appropriate five hundred and eighty thousand dollars to purchase and equip new fire apparatus to replace engine number two.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Did you want to keep the wording under a five-year lease slash purchase agreement?
It doesn't matter at this point because.
Okay.
Yeah, you can.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next article is five, to raise an appropriate forty-three thousand dollars for the equipment capital reserve fund for the SCBA.
Now, that's something that, it's ways out. And if something needs to be put off, I mean, forty-two thousand dollars to you is probably not a lot of money. But if we need to reduce.
Yes, it is.
If we, if we need to reduce something, then I would go after that.
So, well, are you suggesting that you don't need it?
I'm not suggesting that we don't need the SEVA when they come due. I'm suggesting that if we're going to put off anything, let's put that.
Do you have self-contained breathing apparatus currently?
Yes, we do.
And it's currently in good service?
Yeah, right now, it's, you know, it's, they're, they're on a fifteen-year life expectancy.
And how old are they?
They are, we got them in two thousand and seven.
So they're ten years out.
We're projecting that in twenty twenty-two, they're going to need to be replaced. And it, it was a big number. And that's why several years ago, we started putting some money aside every year.
Is it in all of the?
No, no, it's like three hundred and something thousand dollars. This is, this was to put the money away as, as we went along. But it's not something that we currently need today as far as.
Is it in the capital reserve now?
It's, it's in the CIP report. I don't know what it is, several years worth. And there was a year that we took a holiday on it for some other needs.
But I think that that would be the place to.
It just, what, what it means is at that time when we have to do the replacement, we, we have to pony up a bigger chunk out of our revenue than.
But our capital. Or you could increase it the following years a little bit.
Right.
I know the cap, the trustees of the trust fund said that they've been able to be aggressive in their interest rate. It's above passbook savings and every time, every thousand dollars we skip, it does exactly what you say, it adds to the final figure. And the capital, the, the trustees of the trust fund and the library trustees are the only ones that can, can go out and their, their money they can maximize. We have to do it at passbook savings or checkbook accounts.
So.
What are your thoughts, Bill?
I, I think we ought to include this article. And we get done with everything at the end, you know, if we need to squeeze something out, it's something to.
Squeeze out.
I, I think now is not the time to eliminate it. You know, four or five weeks from now.
It might be a different story.
Maybe a different story. So I'm, I'm going to move, maybe include an article to raise an appropriate forty-three thousand dollars to be added to the existing SCBA equipment capital reserve fund.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Yeah.
Do we want to do paving now or go on to the other items?
I'm fine.
Okay. To raise and appropriate two hundred and thirty-five thousand for paving of town roads and road improvements.
Would we consider including the thirty-one thousand?
Yeah.
Making that one article where it's paving at the town garage and paving on the roads.
I was going to bring that up.
Does that make sense? Or?
Yeah, I think so.
Jim gave you focuses for today.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I think the combining.
Put it on the schedule.
Folks, we need to talk about two things. First of all, is the letter that Jeff and Adriana Nukam sent, what's about Shirley Way?
Is that on the list? I'm sorry.
That was in our thing to discuss today. It says for working on warrant articles.
I see Jim does have that in his summary thing.
Yeah.
Did he come up with a price on that?
I can't do that.
It's on, it's on his schedule.
Two twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-three.
Remember, I asked him about the SAM paving, the alternate paving. Did he give us an estimate for Shirley Way?
I think the quotes that you asked for, is that the last page that looks like this?
That's right.
This is.
Yeah. I also asked about Shirley Way.
So.
Yeah, I was.
So we on a ten-year cycle?
I believe it's a fifteen-year cycle. He projected it out. On the year twenty twenty-nine or something. If I remember correctly, that's what he talks about, rebuilding and paving these roads. It's a fifteen-year cycle. And what, what he's asking about is moving up Shirley Way to twenty eighteen.
Jim explained to me that Shirley Way did not have the two coats that they normally have. They went with a thick primary coat. My thought was, remember when he was in here, I gave an example, we had a talk, a tack meeting?
Yeah.
And I said, what about using this alternate method? And I gave him the name of the road agent in Osiphe. They did five miles of it and there was a savings. And they did it for roads unlike Sodom Road, Durgan Road, federal, uh, Ledchill Road that just take a beating with heavy trucks.
Based on their work in Osiphe, do you have a budget number for how much that costs?
Three times I asked Jim.
I'm talking about the project, the project that you were aware of in Osiphe.
They, I do not have with me how much it was on the bill.
So Brown, Durgan and Northline are on the schedule, the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and the town garage. So he's about two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. He's got an additional fifty thousand dollars in his paving budget from the estimate that he got from F R Carroll. So if you.
I, I know when, when he talked with CIP, when he made his presentation to CIP, he was including in twenty eighteen what he's talking about on the front page, which is the rest of Durgan Road and, and the Wolfboro end of Brown Road. And that's, that's not everything that's in, in the quote from F R Carroll.
Well, he did the math for those two things.
Right.
But he's still going to have some left over. And.
Durgan Road is seventy-one thousand seven fifty, right?
Durgan?
Yes, Durgan Road surface, remainder of Durgan Road.
Eighty, eighty-one thousand two hundred.
I have seventy-one seven fifty. Am I, am I missing something?
Durgan Road finished reclaim twenty-two hundred and eighty feet, twenty-two foot wide equals eleven thousand two hundred dollars, right?
Right, and, and the base, forty-nine. So that's sixty thousand two hundred dollars to finish Durgan Road.
Plus.
And, and seventy thousand for base, no, eighty, eighty-four thousand and change for the base and reclaim on Brown Road.
He's got Durgan Road surface of one inch over both reclaimed sections.
Right.
At seventy-one thousand.
Sure.
We're doing a mile of Durgan Road. There isn't a mile left of Durgan Road.
No, there's twenty-two hundred and fifty feet left.
So.
And, and then finished coat on everything, which is six, which is a little over a mile total.
All right. So all of that added up together is two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, according to Jim. I haven't done the math. And if you add to that the twenty-six thousand for the town garage, you're at two forty-two. And if we take the two warrant articles, we have two sixty-six. So that gives us twenty-four thousand dollars to do something on Shirley Way.
No, that, that two hundred and thirty-five includes road improvement and prep in addition to the, to the.
In addition to the F R Carroll bill?
Right.
So the reclaim means nothing? What is that?
That's grinding up the base.
Right.
But, but the, the road improvement and prep includes like.
Culverts.
Replacing culverts, digging, digging the rocks out of the road.
And that's done by the road agent before Carol shows up.
So we don't have anything to do with it necessarily?
Well.
His information is incomplete. I specifically asked three different times, it would have been the record last meeting, could he give us the estimate to reclaim, and I listed the road, to grind and reclaim the road, to pave it and to have Carol do the shoulders like they did on Durgan Road. And we have yet to get that information. This is not a complete estimate.
Well, you say that was for the town garage as well?
Well, we're looking at including the, the town garage pavement, which was.
Yeah, if they did that, they should put a concrete pad in front of the gas pump. Because it should be spill protection here and it should not be asphalt.
And, and I know that the, that's a good point. I, I know that the, the paving included a concrete apron in front of the doors.
The garage doors, but not for the gas. That should be kind of leveled off with an apron in front of that for gas bill.
So should we table the paving of both of these articles?
Yes.
I, I still have an issue with this list here. I think Federal Corner Road is more important than some of the aside roads, but I can be unconvinced of that.
Well, I think we, you know, we can sit down here and argue about the relative importance of these roads all day long, but without the road agent here, we're not going to get anywhere. Paving new roads.
And I'm only one voice here and I'll defer to you.
I, well, again, I've been looking at his projection for road paving for several years. I've always come to CIP with it. And this is not inconsistent with the list that he's been working on for the last several years. So, I mean, I, I don't know if it's in the right order or not. It, it has seemed to work for the town to do that. But if we want to move things up or back on the list, I think it's, we need to have that conversation. He's a road agent, he says, here's what I'm going to do, and he goes forward on it, brings it to this board. Board puts it on the warrant, goes to town meeting, gets voted. Next year, he comes back and kind of ratchets up a year. So if some of these things are out of sequence, then it's important to have that conversation and not just say, well, you know, we got this one down here, we want to move it up five years because it is deteriorating. Maybe it's worse than something else. I, I would think that the road agent sees the roads more than the rest of us. Not everybody on all these roads are equally vocal in their, in their opinion on what needs, needs work.
He did, excuse me, I apologize. I was going to say, he did ask if he needed to come today and I knew that I didn't have a request, so I'm going. So I just said, I think they just need that information, so that couldn't be my fault.
So if there's some specific things that we want to see pricing on, then we ought to provide a list and ask that, that he, that he gets the quotes.
And email him.
And, and bring the information in.
Okay, so put them on for January?
Yeah. An article to raise an appropriate thirty thousand dollars to replace the septic system of the town public library. Do you think that's enough money?
Do you think thirty thousand is enough to do that job? I think so.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Create a warrant article to raise an appropriate thirty thousand dollars to replace the septic system of the town public library.
There should be a plan next week, you told me.
I'll second.
I don't know how many. We should know how many rows of environment is going to take and all that, so we can get a ballpark. Close the best should be. We can revisit it, correct?
Absolutely.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next. Library.
How much is in the current capital reserve? Do we have? Where's that?
It, it is in the body of the.
CIP.
CIP report.
Yeah.
Obviously, this has a lot of conversation in the community. And I've been asked three questions. What is it for a twenty-year bond? What is it for a fifteen-year construction loan? And I've had several people say, what if the people vote on the balance to be raised by taxes and voted in for one year? And I'd like to ask the library people or somebody to research those three things for me.
So, I mean, that would require three warrant articles, is that what you're thinking?
Actually, it wouldn't. I researched this and at that budget committee meeting, the hearing, it is talked about. It is legal for town meeting, the people to make a motion to choose any one of those funding options without changing the meaning of the warrant article.
If you look at the chart in there, it says over on the right-hand side, how much is in.
Page twenty-three. Can you remember, a current budget committee member made a comment that he could support the library if it meant out of new taxes, the year it was funded was only sixty percent of the total cost. And I think that the, through circumstance, that's exactly what.
Four hundred and ten thousand dollars is sitting there currently.
And plus, there's.
Pudges?
Plus the, the library has a building fund separate from the capital reserve fund. And that may or may not be listed in what's their.
Oh, their own money.
Right, that's not listed in here. And they also have pledges.
And do we have any idea how much that?
They do have that figured plus.
So all I see here is assumes a net of one point one million to be financed.
So they must have four hundred thousand of their own money. Because if you take the four-ten, that's in the capital reserve now. One nine twenty, the one five-ten, so they must have four hundred grand. So one point one million dollars to finance. Or pay out in one swoop. Because you, according to this, in a twenty-year loan, your total cost is a million six on a million one. So they're talking about a half a million dollars worth of interest.
And that might be. Well, I, I would offer that for a million dollars, give or take, in borrowing for a town project, twenty years might be an extended payment period. You know, ten years may be more appropriate. Obviously, it lowers the, the annual payment, but it does accrue additional.
For example, the fire station, they went with a construction loan for two point four nine percent a year. And the reason they didn't bond it for twenty years is that process saved the town five hundred thousand dollars in interest over the life of the note. No prepayment penalty. Here is where, should we talk to our treasurer and have him come in on the twenty-ninth?
It is available.
I mean, he was the one that.
Yeah, I mean, there are, I don't know, in, in public funding, bonding, I don't know any ten-year bonds owed that might be. But you're dealing with a marketplace at that.
Yes.
We're not dealing with a lender.
And the, and you went through it with the.
And there's advantages both ways.
Yes, there is.
But the no prepayment, we're only talking. But the no prepayment, I'm only talking a million one, for God's sake. Two payments of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you're done.
Yeah.
You're paying, you know, that much for a fire, and this is a.
Yes.
Forty or fifty-year building.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it, I think it would.
So.
If there's a mechanism to present the options to the to the voters, that would be nice, but that only happens at the budget hearing?
I will, I did research, this was when I was chairman. That's why we take the budget meetings and and all of that. If it can be proved to DRA that it was a valid subject matter at that public hearing, you escape the the issue that, well, you're changing the meaning of the warrant article. I don't know if I explained it properly or not. And I don't, right now, I don't favor one over the other, but I've had, you know, a number of people ask me about all three options, so. And there are advantages to all all three ways of doing it.
So.
Well, first of all, guys, are we in favor of it being a, the subject being a warrant article this coming town meeting?
It has been suggested to me that because my wife works for the library, that it's appropriate for me to recuse myself from a vote on this, so I, you know, I I I will do that. I mean, I.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can escape it. I mean, it's been presented.
It's a small.
Worst-case scenario is it becomes a petition warrant article, which it could be just as easily.
Yes.
So now it's a matter of us sitting down and figuring out whether or not we're recommending it to voters.
Now we're just talking about the substance.
Right.
Well, I had another question, for example, is is, let's say, the library is the fundraising, and they go out and push a little more on fundraising. I have no problem, like we did with the valet, the watershed thing, before our money gets spent, outside money gets spent. In other words, let's say they came up with five hundred thousand dollars of pledges and donated money. That reduces the town, town's share.
Well, I think before we get into that sort of an arrangement, we'd have to have another meeting with our trustees.
Yep.
Because we'd have to set a goal for them and say, okay, we we're on board a hundred percent at a million, or.
Yep.
Some are fifty, whatever the number that you think is magic. You guys gotta pledge to raise.
Gotta start walking, yeah.
Raise the rest of the money.